I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If everybody would remain standing for a moment of silence. And I would also like for us to all maybe say a special prayer. A good friend of the towns, Alan Trzynski, a neighbor of ours and 28-year veteran, was a recruiter for the National Guard at Sun Valley High School. A lot of people knew Alan. And it was described in his funeral Tuesday, excuse me, Sunday. He was just a good dude. And that's exactly what they said at his funeral. He was a good man. And that's what you saw anytime you saw him. You saw that big smile. So if he had five children, if you'd say a special prayer in a moment of silence for him, it'd be appreciated. Thank you. That brings us up to welcoming everybody. Everybody welcome. And upcoming events, we only have one event before our next meeting. It's a big event. It's Hits After Six at Chestnut Park, 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM. Amazing concert, food trucks. You can have beer, face painting, and a balloon artist will be there. The band is Chairman of the Board. And if any of people are my age and you remember Chairman of the Board, you remember their one big famous song, "Give Me Just A Little More Time." If you remember that, you're as old as I am, so it's been a while. Anyway, I look forward to that. Okay? This brings us up to agenda additions and deletions. Will one of the council members make a motion to delete item 10A from the agenda?
I'll make a motion to delete item 10A from the agenda, please.
All in favor? Unanimous. You get a motion to approve the agenda?
I make a motion to approve the amended agenda.
All in favor? Unanimous. Okay, that brings us to presentations. First presentation tonight is Red Cross Blood Donation Center. Sheila Crunkleton, Executive Director. Come on up, Sheila.
Thank you, thank you. I am very excited to be here tonight.
We're excited to have you.
So thank you, thank you. Well, we have a new blood donation center that has just opened yesterday in Indian Trail at 5880 West Highway 74. I call it the Food Line Shop and Center. I know it has another name. I think it's Union Square or Union something. So you all get it where it is, but we're very, very excited to be there. I have to tell you, when the Red Cross made this decision, this has been about a year and a half decision. We've been working on this, looking for location. They identify a site. They identified two sites in the entire country. They originally started out with the kind of the border, looking at Cabarrus County and Union County. They gradually made their way over and made it right here into Union County, which is my home, so I was thrilled. And the other site went to Chicago, Illinois. So out of the entire country, two sites, and we got one of them. So this is very, very exciting. So they, let's see, they're going to be open five days a week, Sunday through Thursday. They will be closed Friday and Saturday, which did make the other businesses in that area very happy because their biggest days are Friday and Saturday, so they didn't have to deal with our traffic on those days. The idea here is to really focus on platelet collections. Now, they'll also take whole blood and Power Reds. They'll do everything there, but platelets are the big thing. And prior to this, you had to, well, actually back up, prior to March, when they set up an office temporarily in our Monroe office, you had to go into Charlotte, Fort Mill, Huntersville, somewhere else to actually donate platelets. So this is very exciting that now Union County people are going to get to stay in Union County and do this. And the one-of-a-kind project that they actually did with our Monroe office was literally, has never been done anywhere else in this country. They took a humanitarian services building and transformed it into a blood building temporarily. So very proud of that, very proud of our volunteers for actually working hard with that. So this is not to take away from the community drives. Abby, I want to make sure you hear that. It's not meant to take away from community drives. Community drives are 80% of the drives in this entire country. So we need them. This is meant to enhance that. It's meant to give people away when if you only do a community drive two times a year, well, the other times of the year, they can come give at that fixed site. So we want to keep those. But blood is needed every two seconds, so it is definitely something that there is a need for. The only place you can get it is a donor's arm, and we need to make sure that we keep that going. Platelets only have a five-day shelf life, so they are urgently needed, and 50% of them actually go to cancer patients. So almost all of us know somebody that's been impacted by cancer, and you know, to make sure that those platelets are available when they need it. We have just entered a blood appeal because there is a national shortage, so it's perfect timing for this site to actually open. And blood is FDA-regulated. Always make sure people know that. We have to really follow their rules. But there have been a lot of changes since COVID that they have changed the restrictions. One being the mad cow restriction. If people were, you know, permanently deferred because they lived in Europe for more than six months, which took out a lot of our military, took out a lot of people in the community, that has changed. That deferral is no longer there. They've also changed all the questions, and they have, you know, there's a lot of changes in there. So if you think you were permanently deferred before, go to redcrossblood.org. You may be surprised. That'll list the medicines, everything else that you need to know. And to make an appointment, you go to redcrossblood.org or call 1-800-RED-CROSS. I actually put a thing in there because we opened yesterday. That was a soft opening for two weeks, and then we're going to have the grand opening on the 26th. Everybody's welcome, public's welcome. We're going to have tours from 9:00 to 10:00, and 10:00 o'clock, we're going to cut the ribbon. And then they have to start their quality control to be able to get ready for the donors coming in at 11:00. But yesterday was very exciting. I was the first platelet donor to finish in the thing, and I was, I wanted to do that, and I'm very excited because I'm a fairly new platelet donor. So to be able to do that and to get started with it, it was just, it was thrilling to watch all the people come in. So I hope you realize what a great gift this is to our community, and it's literally going to save lives. So I am, I am very excited about it. But if you have any questions, always reach out to me. Abby has my contact information. Happy to talk to you at any point in time. When I saw the FEMA thing on there, I got a little nervous because my disaster side of me went like, okay. But if you, you know, if you ever need anything, please, please reach out because we're here for you.
Anybody have any questions for Sheila? Sheila, thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you.
We do have something for you. Don't, Sheila, stop, stop.
Sorry.
We have a flag we'd like to welcome you with.
Oh, my gosh, that's awesome. Thank you.
Welcome to Red Cross, a nonpartisan organization that depends on volunteers and the generosity of the American public to deliver its missions. Whereas the Red Cross is open to blood donation center in the town of Indian Trail, whereas Red Cross supplies about 40% of the nation's blood. And Red Cross also feeds and provides comfort to victims of disasters, distributes international humanitarian aid, and supports veterans, military members, and their families. And now therefore, I David Cone, by virtue of authority vested in me as Mayor of Indian Trail, and on behalf of our town council and all of our citizens, do hereby extend our congratulations to Red Cross on a new location and express our appreciation of locating a facility in our town this 12th day of September 2023.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheila.
Thank you.
Next, we have new business. I think everybody's excited about this new business. I can tell by seeing the cars parked over there. It's, are lined up to get in there. Rob Ryan with Slim Chicken. Rob, come on up.
I've got a couple props for myself, Mr. Mayor. So first, I just want to thank y'all. I've had the chance to meet many of you, and I know from public service myself, it's a sacrifice. You guys don't get a lot to come do your job and serve the community. You can get a lot of flack sometimes, whether people like or dislike what you do. I understand that, so I understand the difficulty of it, and I'm grateful. And I can say from your welcoming of the Red Cross, I wish every town we went to was as welcoming when we, when we come in. So appreciate how welcoming you guys have been to us. So just a little background, I feel weird, I feel like I want to tell everybody else because I've met so many of you, and you guys have had the chance to be over. Please come visit us at Slim Chicken's. And one of my props is my hat I wore because I didn't, I didn't have a big Slim Chicken's sign with me. We are located, for those that don't know, right across the street from Sun Valley High School in the Publix Center. It's been a great location. Love everybody from the high school slowly coming over. Let me just tell you briefly who Slim Chicken's. Slim's is a franchise based out of Fayetteville, Arkansas, not North Carolina, based in Southern hospitality. We just like to say fresh, delicious chicken is what we like to orient our conversations around in that Southern hospitality. Some key food takeaways. If you haven't been, key things, tenders, wings, great sauces, but chicken sandwiches, wraps, salads, you can get grilled chicken. And we have some famous cheesecake jar desserts and some fried pickles that are one of my, one of my own personal favorites that I try to stay away from. But as a buddy of mine says, everybody in the family can find something that they like. You can be healthy, or you can indulge in some things that are just, you know, fun to eat. A couple things, our franchise has come here. This is our fourth store in the, or our third store in the Charlotte area. We've got another one about to open up in the Concord area. We're called Break Bread Ventures. I think the title hopefully says something. We want your experience coming in to eat to be an experience of breaking bread together, having time, fellowship. And we do, a couple things I thought I would, I would mention that we're doing here in Indian Trail so far with some of the high schools. We are doing a Slim's Player of the Game, I think both for Sun Valley High School and Metro Atlanta, both their high schools, we're doing a Player of the Game. For the football teams, we'll be broadening that out, so that's been fun. We do have a great front porch, if you haven't been over, which is great to sit out and, again, enjoy some time together. One of the things that my business partner and I, it's really important for us, and I did bring, I had to bring it, and I don't know, Abby, if we can, if we can take this, you know, we are hiring, and it's even got a nice QR code you can scan if you would like to. And I'll leave it, I'll leave it somewhere here. But it's important to us for anybody that comes to work with us to grow. And a lot of people, we realize, may, if you're a high schooler, you may end up at college, you may advance in our store. And we're glad for whatever the next phase of your, you know, career is, we want you to get a great experience working with us, be mentored, and grow as a person personally and vocationally. I think, I think that's, that's it for me, but really appreciate the welcome that you guys have given us here so far.
Any questions for Rob?
I just sent him a text and asked him if his chicken was good in overtime like their football team was this past weekend.
That's right, man. You guys, it was a great game, so that was fun.
Rob, we also have something for you.
Wow.
It's like a welcome you to Indian Trail.
That brings us up to a proclamation for national dystonia awareness. And I'm going to read it here. Whereas dystonia is a third most common movement disorder affecting no fewer than 300,000 people in the United States and millions worldwide. And whereas dystonia is a neurological movement disorder presenting in various forms characterized by involuntary muscle contractions causing repetitive and twisting movements. And symptoms of dystonia can range from very mild to severe and may affect only one muscle, only one group of muscles, or muscles throughout the body, including those that move the foot, hand, neck, eyes, and mouth. And dystonia is commonly misdiagnosed, delaying access to appropriate medical care for those affected. There are limited treatments for dystonia, and there are currently no cure. And September has been declared National Dystonia Awareness Month by the House of Representatives to raise public awareness and understanding of disorder of dystonia, a disorder affecting people of all ages, races, genders, and social economic classes. And now therefore, I David Cone, Mayor of the Town of Indian Trail, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim the month of September as Dystonia Awareness Month in the Town of Indian Trail and commend its observance to all citizens. In testimony whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause to be affixed the great seal of the Town of Indian Trail, North Carolina, on the 12th day of September 2023. All right. That brings us to the update on the downtown master plan. Mr. McLaurin.
Good evening. What I'm going to do tonight is just remind you of an email that I sent you last Friday about the downtown master plan. And one thing we're going to need the council to do is have a motion to call for a public hearing on September 26th, which would be your next meeting. You might recall there was a presentation given to you on August 8th at that council meeting. I'm not going to repeat what you heard a month ago. But last Friday, I sent you an email that contained basically four attachments. One was the latest edition of the downtown plan. You remember, we had the plan in July, and as they started to make tweaks, instead of running back and forth to Withers and Ravenale, we just made a list and sent it over to them. So that's got the latest. Also, you have in that email I sent you, the downtown master plan update, the draft that was in that. You also had the map, I believe, the link to the map. We also provided you a list of all the various adjustments that have been requested and tweaked since July. You also have in your email attachment a link, which are the proposed changes to the UDO, the Unified Development. The Unified Development Ordinance is a notebook about YATTHIC. Some of you have been in my office and seen it, and that is the nuts and bolts of the plan and, and just development in the town. And then finally, as part of the UDO, you have what is known as a table of uses, where you see the Ps and where you see some changes, you might see a mark out and a red P or a red X or something like that. The reason we sent you that was just to kind of keep you up with the latest. Now, whenever the council does decide to take action, one way or the other, there will be three votes that you will need to do. I know there was a question about why do we do three votes on a downtown master plan? The first vote would be the, if you approve the plan and the map, and I want to stress you can change the lines on the map whichever way you want to. If you vote to approve that, you will basically remove the existing downtown zones, which would be neighborhood business, single-family, and light industrial, and replace it with downtown core, downtown transitional, and downtown transitional residential. And we've talked through all of that. The second vote, so you remove one layer, you put the new layer in. The second vote involves a rezoning. What the rezoning does is if you don't change the rezoning, you've got land uses that is incompatible with the zone that you just approved. So that's why you do the rezoning. And the third and final one deals with the UDO. The UDO, again, is the nuts and bolts to support the plan. That is where we have the language in there about protecting the churches, protecting the Boy Scout hut, protecting the VFW, lowering the height of the buildings to 50 feet. So that's, that's in there. That's why, those are your three votes. Assuming you call for a public hearing in two weeks, after the public hearing, the council will have one of four actions they can take. You can either approve the plan as presented, approve it with modifications, whatever modifications you choose to do, you're the final voice in this, not approve the plan, or you can defer the plan. Are there any questions? Okay? If there are no questions, if I could just get a motion to call for the public hearing on September 26th, it's 6:30.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
And I know you, and I think it would be fair to the public to know if, and I don't, if that, if we planned on voting, to let them know that we plan on voting, because I don't think there's, I don't think we plan on voting, voting on it next meeting. But does that, and I'm maybe ask the attorney, because I think by what I listened to, people may assume that this is going to be a vote on, on this. Do we, can we make, can we, we make a statement or?
You, I'm confused. You want to decide tonight whether or not you are going to vote on the 26th or not?
I'm just kind of thinking it's, it's fair to the public to know that, I personally don't think we're planning on vote, voting on it on the next, next meeting. But I could be, maybe I'm wrong, but Mr. McIntyre.
Can I ask, can I ask a question differently? On the 26th, when we have this public hearing, can we defer the vote to another time if members need more information from the public input, or there's additional deliberation dialogue between the council? Can we defer on the 26th at that public hearing? Can we defer that, extend that timeout?
Yes, you can, you can definitely do that on the 26th. If you make any sort of statement tonight, then you're, you're basically, you know, binding each other's hands, and someone could change their mind and decide on the 26th that they are ready and willing to vote on that night. So I'm hesitant to advise you to do anything tonight.
I said my piece, so I, I don't, I didn't, in my opinion, I don't think there's a, you know, I, I had thought we were going to postpone it till after the election. So, I mean, that's just my opinion, and my, not only my opinion, my thoughts. And anybody else can, can comment on that if they'd like to.
Mr. Barber.
There's, there's been so much.
How many public hearings can we have? To make sure people have a say.
According to the state statute, in your ordinance, there only needs to be one public hearing.
But there can be more? There only needs to be one, but there are allowed more if they need?
You, you can always go above and beyond and have additional public hearings. Just remember that, I believe all the signs are still out there, but we have to notify all the adjacent property owners by mail, and then we also put an ad in the newspaper.
Mr. Gay.
There's been so much disinformation put on social media that this, it hadn't even come to the council yet. We've not even looked at it, and it's already been condemned by people who, they don't even know which way we're going to vote and what we would add to it or whatever, so I think we should delay it.
Mr. Mayor, may I?
Go right ahead.
Ms. Cox, would it be possible for the council to hold a public hearing in two weeks and recess the public hearing until the first meeting in October? Avoid re-advertising every time?
Yeah, if you want to have an additional public hearing, instead of you would just, instead of closing that public hearing, just resetting it, as long as you have a date and time certain to the next meeting at 6:30, then you don't have to send out notices again or put an ad in the newspaper, and that'll save staff time and additional expense.
Okay. Is everybody happy with that? Okay.
All right. So one of the things I requested, do y'all, would y'all like to schedule a public hearing for the 26th, realizing, of course, you do not have to close that public hearing, you could recess it until the October also, so you would, in essence, have two public hearings. You just didn't close one once you closed it, you got to re-advertise it.
Let me get a, yes, go ahead, Mr. McIntyre.
I would like to make a motion for us to have the public hearing on the 26th, and then the council makes that decision to extend it, keep it open for the rest of the public to get their opinions in.
Okay. So if I heard you and I didn't hear everything you said, but, so you said extend it.
Well, let me just say this, right? I'd like to just make the motion, and then we, that way we have, we have the public hearing. When we get to the meeting on the 26th, any one of us here can make a motion to just keep it open or extend it till October, the first meeting in October, and therefore that, that's solved.
Mr. Gay.
Yeah, I want people to come in here, and I want you to ask hard questions, and we want to give you answers that are honest and straight, because that's not been out in the, in the community here, that's not been the fact. So come in here for, for a session and let us tell you exactly how this is going to be, rather than listening to hearsay.
Okay. So.
I didn't hear all that, but I'd rather see some presentations on it, and then at some point, have a public hearing in like a couple of months or something. I mean, I, I think we need more information, and I think the public needs to see what it is, so they'll know what to comment on. That's how I feel.
Well, I agree with that, but I would ask council to talk to the planning department and go down and put your input. We've been doing this now for months on this, on, on the plan, and if nobody's going to, you know, you, go put your, your two cents in work at the, at the town hall.
People see it.
Well, the people can see it, but, but to present it, you, you need to go down and speak with the planning department, tell them what your ideas are. And that's something that, that a lot of us haven't done, is, you know, if you don't like something on it, let them know. It happened right here in the meeting when we were talking about, you know, churches and, and the fact that when a church burned down 50%, and you had to, it burned down by more than 50%, then you couldn't rebuild it. Well, we, we discussed it in the meeting, and we changed that to, we could, we could rebuild a church even if it built all the way to the ground. And those are the things that we need to discuss and let the planning department know as a council to, to, to know before we, we present it to, I agree, that before we present it to the public. But if you get zero input from the council, then they don't know what to do. So anyway, I just want to make a suggestion that we, we talk to the planning department and give it, give them our ideas.
Ms. Mayor, may I? If you've got specific ideas that you would like, if you'll send it to me, I'll forward it to the planning department, and you, you have your public hearing. And then council decides what kind of tweaks, just so we're aware of what you're, what you're interested in. Some of you we've heard from. Also, I just want to remind everybody, on our website, under the planning tab, you'll see a link that says master plan update, and it's got a whole list of documents, all of those of which I sent you on Friday. If any of the council wants a hard copy of this, if you'll let me know, we will certainly make that available. Because sometimes when you get particularly people my age, we just like to spread it out and highlight it. So just, I just need to hear from y'all that, hey, I'd like a hard copy, and we'll be glad to provide that.
So, Mr. Mayor, can I just add one thing, please?
Sure.
If the, if the planning department presents the information to us, I think that's when we open the meeting for a public hearing to allow the residents to speak, and we don't end or close it at that particular meeting. We keep it open to the subsequent meeting to give the public enough time, in particular those who may not be able to make it on that, that particular day. But to give them enough time, whether, whether they want to send things through email, through telephone calls, or personal visits down to the planning department, or come in person and speak in the meeting in October, and then I think the council can, you know, go ahead and do that. I mean, I would like when the information is presented that people who may have had the opportunity to review this before or while sitting in the audience can actually come in and come up to the mic, because there will be a, a chance for them to sign up to speak right after that presentation is made, and let their voice. speak right after that presentation is made, and let their voice and their concerns be heard.
And if, if I could add, Mr. Mayor, if you will give us a context of what you would like in the presentation, what you feel would be most helpful, that can help us as we start to craft something together.
Very good suggestions. Thank you.
I'd, I'd just like to say to the folks out there, I mean, if you see something on social media, that's not in stone. I mean, and people put stuff on social media for a lot of reasons, but this council has not seen this yet. It's all kicked around in the planning department, the, they had a planning meeting or whatever, and nothing has been put before this council, and it's a shame that people have been out there saying this is in stone, and we're going to pull those churches, and we're not going to have a V F W, that sort of thing. This is ridiculous, and this is not the way government should run, and shame on the people who are doing it.
Mayor Coman.
Mr. Ambergy.
It's like the mayor said, you know, the current plan we have, we've been, we've had it for 17 years, and nothing transpires, so we got time. I mean, everybody should be able to speak on it and see it and hear the truth, and so there's no rush, and we'll just follow the guidelines, let us all go through it.
Very good. Okay.
I think we have a motion, don't we?
I'd like to make a motion, so. I'd like to make a motion to schedule the downtown master plan public hearing date for the 26th of September, 2023.
All in favor? No? Did you hear, hear, okay. Mr. McIntyre, Mr. Gay, Holly, and Ms., Mr. Ambergy voted for it, all against?
I don't know what day he said, so.
Next, the next meeting. The next, the next meeting.
The Harry Barry meeting, I let people speak on it.
Yeah.
They don't get to speak later on, though, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Possibly, yeah.
We can have another public hearing.
Yeah.
We're not closing.
Yeah. Okay, that's unanimous.
Just to be clear, what I'm understanding you're going to be doing at the next meeting is you would like a presentation, okay? If by Friday, you could kind of give us just some thumbnail sketches about what is important to you, you'd like for the planning staff to try to put together in the presentation. Following that, you will then open the public hearing, but you will not close the public hearing, it will simply be recessed until the first meeting in October. At the end of that, then you have those four options that I've spoken about.
Yep.
We're good?
One, one last question, sir, if you don't mind. The affected individuals, will they be notified of this public hearing so they can come in in addition to, you know, the ordinary citizen?
I believe that to be true, because we're ready to pull the trigger to, to announce that. I think we have to notify, is that correct? We have to notify all the property owners?
All the property owners and adjoining, and adjoining property owners.
Thank you.
We'll, we'll get that, and there will be an ad going out in the paper also.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, very good. That brings us to public comments. Acknowledge public comment rules by addressing council. You acknowledge you've read the town's public comment rules and will abide by them. Okay, first speaker is Amanda Falconberry.
I'm here to announce a political candidate forum will be held on September 30th in the Shirley Howell Room downstairs between 2:00 P M. and 5:00 P M. It is open to the public. The candidates will have five minutes to do an introduction, then there'll be a question and answer session. Questions will be accepted from the candidates and the public. We encourage all candidates to attend. Video cameras are welcome. I have an information sheet for all of the candidates. If you did not receive one, please see me or my husband. Thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you. Heather Klaus.
First, I just want to say thank you, and I have to address you all, but I really appreciate taking your time on the downtown plan. So, just want to say thank you, because I, I got to visit with a lot of the downtown core businesses and residents over the last week and a half, and there's some concerns, and I encourage them to attend the meetings, so I really appreciate that very much. Second, I won't spend a lot of time on it. I am running for town council of Indian Trail. I am actually very excited. My husband thinks I'm crazy, but I'm going to do it anyway. I do want to make a, a public announcement that I would really appreciate if any running candidates, any new running candidates, please be mindful of what you put out there. There are some very slanderous information and defamation of character, and I have notified my attorney, so I am asking that certain material be taken down. I think they know who they are, and we don't need to attack other candidates during their, their running. I'm going to run a clean race, so I just want to put that out there. We all need to work together. You never know, we may be working with each other and sitting in that same space as everyone else. The other thing I want to address as well, which kind of puts that same perspective in place is, you know, I, I have taken a lot of time, I work in the community, I work with a lot of students, parents, teachers, not only in education, but in mental health. I have worked with D S S here in our community, I have worked with tons of students, and I work with students and families now when it comes to working with kids and trauma. And I just want to put it out there that we need to be mindful of how we speak to people, what we say to people, and being respectful, and whether we're in government, non-government, but we're in a community, I'm a community leader. I want to thank the town manager as well for being very responsive to me and listening and doing the due diligence. I know sometimes it brings high intensity and frustration in this business, but I think that we can come to, like, adequate resolutions. The other quick thing I wanted to address is just some of the political signs in campaigning. Thank you for doing the due diligence and reaching out. I do want to, however, put out there that each candidate needs an adequate same-time running race, whereas other candidates have signs already out there on private property, and by law, state law, it's private property, you know, signs are signs. I understand there's an ordinance, but I think that each candidate needs to have the same exact stance and race as, as everyone else. So I just want to put that in motion. The second thing, I just want to continue, when we go to talk about later down in this agenda, Todd Barber, is just be mindful that this is another fellow candidate that you work with, and, thank you.
Thank you, Evan. Larry Dukes.
My name is Larry Dukes. My information is on file. Mr. Town Manager, I never knew how hard your job really is in keeping town staff on point, as well as keeping town council and everyone else happy. So my, my comments to you, compliments to you, sir. I come before you tonight as a 17-year resident of Indian Trail. I come before you tonight as the Indian Trail Planning Board Chairman. I have seen the master plan, my committee, and I have a fellow member here in the audience, we saw that plan for two different meetings. I am not an expert on it, it is a very large plan, so there is a lot of information that has started, has been revised, and is moving forward, as we just heard from the town manager. I also come before you tonight as a candidate for the Indian Trail Town Council in November. I will highlight my qualifications at a later meeting. I come, really the main purpose tonight is the motion for censor that was made at the last meeting. One, one councilman brought that forward, it was then initiated and approved by two others. I guess my main thing, I have lots of information here, and I'm going to be beeped before I'll be able to finish it. I've worked in corporate America for quite a while. I understand that corporate America is very different than town management in every way. But there is something that is actually very much the same, and it was actually pointed out in the original allegations or the letter that came out from it, and that is that we need to have accuracy and truth in all matters, and I agree with that. Whether it's in corporate America, town, town management, our churches, our schools, our neighborhoods, it doesn't matter. So I come before you in asking for truth and, and accuracy of these, of these allegations, that they be made totally true and clear to everyone, not just in comments or interpretations. So I would ask for this motion to be disapproved to show that transparency, truth, and accuracy do mean something in Indian Trail Town Council. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Larry. Michael Falconberry.
Yeah, I attended this special meeting a week or two ago in, in regards to item 9 C. Morality was brought up in that special meeting, and rightfully so, each one of us have different morals. However, I would think thou shall not bear false witness should apply to everyone. There was a misquote, and the council member did put on the Facebook page, and an attempt to make a defense, and it was exactly what the council member had written to the record. He omitted part of that quote, but what the planning director did say. Freedom of speech is fine. We don't have a social media policy, as it was brought up, but we do have social media guidelines. Policies, you tell somebody to do something, guidelines, you ask. Hopefully, you do the same with both, use good judgment. I never got a response from my email I sent to a particular council member addressing the situation, pointing, pointing out the part, the part, the point that he did not quote the planning director correctly. Never got a response. He does owe the planning director a public apology. That should be done tonight on the record. Also, I addressed a social media post during the council meeting back in 2016. I encourage you to look at public comments, see what I had to say. Freedom of speech does have consequences. As I've referred to before, you don't wear a Tar Heel shirt to a Duke basketball game and talk trash about Duke. Wouldn't recommend it. Thank you very much.
Dan Schellenkamp.
Thank you, mayor and council. My name is Dan Schellenkamp. I'm running for mayor of Indian Trail. Please view my campaign Facebook page, elect Dan Schellenkamp. I am a 29-year resident of Indian Trail. My wife, Amy, and I have been married for 36 years. She was, she was born and raised in what is now Indian Trail. We raised our family here. We attend Shiloh Baptist Church. I am retired after a very rewarding career in computer software development, software technical sales, and eventually as a software product manager. The last 25 consecutive years of my career were with IBM. My last several roles with IBM initially included up to 50% domestic travel, and later up to 75% domestic and international travel. Worldwide, I met with customers, prospects, and IBMers. My various roles required technical, sales, and marketing, speaking engagements and presentations in front of large audiences, oftentimes multinational audiences. IBM trusted me to negotiate multimillion-dollar, multi-year contracts. When there were customer issues with the software that I managed, I was on a plane, and I went face-to-face to meet with those customers, some of the world's largest banking, insurance, manufacturing, and financial companies. I understand budgets, I understand financial statements, I understand technology. IBM put their trust in me. Many of IBM's largest customers put their trust in me. In 2005, Indian Trail voters put their trust in me. I had the great privilege to serve four years as an Indian Trail council member. The council I served on made many much-needed positive strides for the betterment of Indian Trail and our citizens. That council helped build the foundation for so much of what we enjoy today in Indian Trail. Please view my campaign Facebook page, elect Dan Schellenkamp, for a list of many of those accomplishments. I, I am an experience, I am experienced as an elected official. I am experienced as a business professional. I am a true fiscal conservative. I will research the town's business into the late hours of the night. I will ask the questions that citizens would ask. I will treat all taxpayers' money with great respect. I will run council meetings in a professional and open manner. I will never compromise when it comes to public safety. I do not take campaign money from any special interests. Please get out and vote on November 7th. Please vote for me as your next mayor of Indian Trail. Thank you.
Thank you. Clarence Alsobrooks.
Mayor, council, thank you for your time. You know, I had a speech prepared, but I'm going to speak from the heart. There's a lot going on in Indian Trail. There's some things going on that I've never seen in my life, and it's sad. I too am a candidate for town council, but we'll get to that later. Even though I'm a candidate, I want to speak on something I've spoke on before. There are a lot of organizations that need help out here, and some of those organizations are Union West Rotary, Eagle Rock Camp, Cameron's House of Hope, House of Pearls, Lions Club, U S O, Hometown Heroes, Council on Aging, Safer Communities, Union Candidate Back to School, BASH, the V F W, Food for Families, Boy Scout Troops, Girls on the Run, Second Harvest, the Salvation Army, Union Diversified Industries, Cameron's Common Heart, and Turning Point. Again, speaking from the heart. If you are a faith-based person, call up an organization, pray for them, see if they need prayer. If you want to donate, call them up, donate. If you want to volunteer, volunteer. So even though this election is going on, these organizations still can use help. But now, let's go to my bid for a candidate as town council. When I started running town council, I spoke to someone, I am part of Union West Rotary, and he said, you know what, Clarence? We have the four-way test. As long as you use this, you'll be just fine. What is the four-way test? Is it the truth? Is it fair to all concerned? Will it build goodwill and better friendship? Will it be beneficial to all concerned? That is something that we should take and we should bring to this office. Now, when you, I'm on the board of adjustments of Indian Trail, and when you're sworn in, let's see here, you repeat, I state your name, do solemnly affirm that I will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States, the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as a member of Indian Trail. You state that office, so help me God. The word Constitution is in there. And do we know what the Constitution say? Do we study the Constitution? Now, I'm not a scholar, but I've sat under many people that have educated me in the Constitution. The preamble of the Constitution states, we the people, in order to form a more perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility, provide for the common offense, promote, promote the general welfare, and secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves and to our prosperity to. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ms. Benita Stone.
Hello. Can you hear me? I know I'm short, short, go ahead. Get that down. Anyway, I don't speak publicly very often, and I wanted to make sure that I read through the, what I could find on the, on the website under downtown master plan to get a better idea of what was going on, so that I could be an informed citizen. I've lived in the town for 45 years in my same house. I raised my children here. I moved here, like most everybody else I did, everybody else that I know did, because we wanted to get away from the big city. And you probably figure out right there where I'm going, because every time I talk to somebody, it's, why are they doing this here? But anyway, so I'm, I'm reading the master plan. Most, a lot of this is the quote, quotes, and the first part was just paragraphs that said, housing should include options for people in all stages of life. in all stages of life." I have... Over a year ago, I wrote a letter to the town council, because I couldn't be here at the meetings, and I said something about the developments that were being approved in the area, the same-sized house as mine, and the average price was not the $180, which is what my house was worth then. They were coming out as $350,000 and up. And I was going like, "What the heck?" And I wrote in the note to y'all that, "Why are you doing this? You're making it impossible for my own children to be able to afford to live here." Okay, so this is... I read into... It's called, what is it? Principle 1: Commercial and Housing Diversification That Caters to Various Income Ranges. My question is, where is there any plan for affordable housing? There isn't any. I've read it. It's... Principle 2 is... It's just obvious from reading that, that the plan is to produce... The plan we see produce, excuse me, caters to attract the rich and force the current residents who can no longer afford housing and taxes out of this area. Where are... And this is another quote from the principles. "Where are the attractive residential opportunities so that children and grandchildren of residents can stay here to enjoy the parks and everything in our location, in our town? We won't be able to afford to be here to do it, because we can't afford the homes." Principle 3 talks about upgrading roads, and my question is, "When?" All these... Okay.
Thank you.
Too slow.
Thank you, everybody, for your public comments tonight. Brings us to our law enforcement update. Captain Hunky.
Mr. Mayor, Council. One of the common themes that I've heard tonight is social media and Facebook. And I just want to let you guys know, I've never been on it, don't ever plan to be on it, because it's... To me, it's... Facebook is the devil. But I will say this. I've had a lot of comments from you guys saying, "Hey, citizens have reached out to you guys through social media." And that's a great outlet for communication. But understand, the greatest outreach communication to law enforcement is 911, okay? If you have a suspicious car in your neighborhood, if you have a suspicious person in your neighborhood, please don't go to What's Up, Indian Trail, or don't go to your neighborhood and start gossiping around it, because all you're going to do is witness crimes versus stopping crimes by calling 911. A lot of people don't want to call 911 because they don't think it's an emergency. Well, that's not your job to decide. That's ours, okay? If you call 911 over a situation, we decide how we respond. You don't. Just because you call 911 doesn't mean we're coming at warp speed and blue lights and sirens. So please, I ask that you utilize 911. Give us a call. Let us decide if that suspicious person is just a, you know, boyfriend of your neighbor or something like that, or if it's someone breaking into cars in the case may be. Please let us know. The other thing about social media that it does kind of give you a little bit of insight, you held up the... You said the name Alan Tarzinski, and I knew the name, and I was like, "That name sounds so familiar," until you turned the obituary around and I saw that smile. That's Tarzan. To me, he was Tarzan. Did not know he passed away until I was standing here when you mentioned it. So I kind of wish I had that little thing right there. And it was a smile that I recognized. He was a great fellow. We've known each other for years, so he will be dearly missed. I hadn't talked to him in years, and COVID kind of pushed us apart, just like everything else. But like I said, he was... I would say Tarzan was a great fellow. And I know he lived over there, lived over there by you, so I'll miss him. Hate that I didn't get to speak to him. I gave you guys our annual... Or, excuse me, our monthly stats. They're all looking the same. I will say, too, about this past... And I'm just going to talk about my guys and my profession as a whole. We had a homicide last week in Indian Trail, and the suspect, through due diligence of my officers, through working with our detectives and other agencies, he was caught within the hour. He was caught out of state, but he was caught within the hours through our hard work. I say "our hard work." I don't work that hard. Through their hard work, their due diligence, their communication, he was able to be caught within the hour. And I just want to praise our guys and praise the organization as a whole and our profession. So if you have nothing for me, that's all I have.
Nothing?
No? Okay.
Be good. Thank you, Captain Hunky.
Thank you, guys.
That brings us to our consent agenda, and before I move on with that, I need to get Mr. Hunsinger to come up and explain something on it.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just want to give the council a heads-up. The resolution we're passing, the consent agenda for that intersection, the county also wants us to acknowledge the intersection that we're selected, so that's why you were passed out that list. That's the list that you were... On the PowerPoint that you were provided back in July. You know, yes, when the county representative came and did his presentation. The county would like the town, and the manager will do this during the manager's update, but basically just acknowledge that they saw the list, that they don't have any concerns, even if it's outside their jurisdictions, have any concerns about it. That way, when he goes and presents it to the board commissioners, because the board will ask them, "Do you have any issues with the towns, the Caesar towns, with this list?" And so he just wants to be able to say, "No, all towns and cities are okay with the list." So that's it. But that'll happen in the manager's update, just FYI.
Any questions?
And also, the list shows the other intersection in town, Indian Trail. I decided not to do that, and for now, the Rogers Road, West Chapel is the one, so that will be on that list eventually. But that's just the list that was presented in July. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Todd.
Sorry. Any questions? Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, so that brings us to the consent agenda. Can I get a motion, recommended motion on the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
All in favor?
All in favor.
Oh, you're not... Okay, I'm sorry. All in favor, okay. All objecting to it? Okay, Mr. Amburgi objects. The... Mr. Barber, Uholak, Gay, and McIntyre are all four. Thank you. All right. Brings us to public hearings. By addressing council, you acknowledge you've read the town's public comment rules and will abide by them, but I don't think there's anybody going to... On the sign-up sheet. So go right ahead, Brandy. I'm going to let you tell us what the first word is down there.
I will. Thank you, sir. Good evening, Mayor and Council. The rezoning tonight is a straight conventional rezoning. Ashray, Funiza, Goose rezoning. Easier said, just a rezoning off of Old Monroe Road. So let's just take a little bit of a look at what's being asked. Again, just like multiple requests that have come before you over the last year, it's SF1 going to General Business District. This is located on Old Monroe Road between Picket Circle and Sun Valley Commons. It is part of the Valley Estates subdivision, but these lots front Old Monroe Road. Total of 1 1/2 acres, and again, it's straight, conventional. There's no site plan. This does open it up to the General Business District to be developed by right. Of course, the UDO does allow for buffers and other protections for those residents that are adjacent to it. So here's the aerial view for you. You can see the subject properties in red. You've got Sun Valley Commons over to the east, Picket Circle over to the west, a little bit of the Sagecroft, the village at Sagecroft, if you remember that request back from 2013. They have commercial flank in Old Monroe Road as well, and then across from Sun Valley Station. Here's a street view traveling on Old Monroe towards Sun Valley Commons. Another street view traveling the opposite direction towards Picket Circle. Here is what's across the street, just to kind of give you an idea of the area if you're not familiar with it. Again, another single-family home across the street. Then you can see the zoning map. There is a little bit of a hodgepodge. There's county property. There's single-family. You've got the CZ approvals from the Sun Valley Station going on, but as you can see in this area from Picket Circle all the way down to Sun Valley Commons, these are the last three fronting Old Monroe towards the east. SF1 does have a low presence, and the general business is expanding in this area. So what does the comprehensive plan have to say about it? This is located in the sub-regional activity center, if you remember with the comp plan recently updated. We increased this activity center because we saw it expanding beyond what it was originally designed for in the comp plan in '06. The future land use does set this out to be commercial, so it is consistent. So I want to talk just a little bit about the Old Monroe widening project. One of our staff planners, Haisway, I'd like to thank him for this graphic. You can see here that these lots, right here, you've got 40, 41, and 42, they are being heavily impacted by the Old Monroe widening. The bulb is going to be there. However, we added in the landscape buffers, and we showed you that there still is some buildable space. You also have lots to the east of it that, you know, a developer could assemble, and you could develop it commercially. So just wanted to briefly touch on that to make sure that that concern was addressed. So your consistency statement for tonight, the proposed rezoning is reasonable and in the public interest because it promotes the goals of the Indian Trail Comprehensive Plan in the areas of economic development and land use and housing. Economic development goal number one, create a more balanced tax base and promote a diverse local economy. Land use and housing goal number one, promote a variety of land uses and avoid potential land use conflicts. Land use and housing goal number six, encourage investment within the community. Here's the action before you, and I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Yes. Go ahead, Marcus.
Thank you. Can we go back to the map for a second, please? Yeah, that's fine, too. So the three lots that are there, right behind them are actual homes, right, where people live in?
That's correct.
So based... And I'm asking you this, so hopefully you can help me. I know that the bulb or the bulb for the turn for the super street that DOT plans to put there is going to eat up, take up some of that land. What about the third off? From going from left to right on the screen, the first lot? If we were to approve this zoning request right now, and somebody were to come in, what protections can we afford the people that are living in the houses right at the back of that? That's the one concern that I have. And can you speak on that a bit, just to make sure that whatever we do now, if we do approve it, all right? I'm just saying that. What can we... What protections can we afford these persons living there?
Right. So there will be buffer requirements according to the Unified Development Ordinance. They're also required to be consistent with the surroundings, so we look at hours of operation within that area. So they couldn't come in with a land use, you know, that stays open until 3:00 in the morning. So there are some protections there.
All right.
There you go. Any other questions? Okay, if there's no other questions, I don't think there's an applicant presentation. Is there... The applicants not here?
No, sir.
Okay. So there is no one signed up for public comments, so can I get a motion to open and close public comments?
Motion to open and close public comments.
All in favor? Unanimous. Okay, any council deliberation at all? If not, can I get a motion and a vote?
I'll make a motion to approve the zoning map amendment request, ZM 2023-0099. Ash... I'm so sorry. Ashrough, Funiza, Goose LLC rezoning, ordinance number 391 as presented.
All in favor? Unanimous.
And then I will make a motion to adopt the consistency findings as read into the record by staff for ZM 2023-0099.
All in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Brandy. That brings us up to Mr. Hunsinger, Navajo Extension Edition Design Services, RS&amp;H Supplement Agreement 1, CIP Ordinance Revision. Mr. Hunsinger, I got a question. How long... How long will this... Do you think this presentation's going to last? And I got one reason to ask you.
It's very short. It's just three slides.
How many minutes?
Three minutes.
Okay. The reason I ask is, I got to go to the bathroom real quick, so if... No, I was... Okay, let's take a break. Okay, I was going to run real quick, but let's take a five-minute break. Yeah, let's resume the meeting. Mr. Hunsinger.
All right, Mayor, Council. Since we're... I'm asking to source some extra money for this project, not extra money, but additional money for design. I figured I'd give you all an update, because we ain't talked about this in a while. So Navajo Extension Project, remember, this is funded through our 2021 street bonds, and right now, we're wrapping up the design, and we should be starting right away as soon as October, hopefully. Just to know, this is the area where the stubout's going to be. I'll show you the plan after this next slide, but what I wanted to convey here was, we are... Sorry. We are... The steps of cavity right here in the back, you see parking stalls that are kind of on street parking lot things in the parking lot, more or less aligned, that there's about nine spots. We're having to take those out in order to lessen the impacts of the adjoining property owner. And so now, as you see, the new road, because we're taking those out right here, the shift of road, so we don't impact the old civic building down here where the pet grooming? Pet grooming business is at, we had to shift the road, so in order to take... We took those parking stalls out. We got to give them... We have to give them back. So we decided we're going to build a whole new parking area between the two buildings. That way, he gets his parking back, and so that was kind of an added design, and that's the reason why I'm coming to add a little bit of money to that. So also, we redid their dumpster location, because the way we've got the drive access, it makes more sense for the trash truck to be able to get in and get out with less impact to the asphalt out there. And then also, this steps of cavity gets inundated with stormwater, off-site with stormwater. They have a existing berm out there that's kind of doing that, but we don't... Obviously, we want to be able to fix that and maintain it, so the Mr. Stein, who owns the pharmacy and owns that adjacent property, is going to allow us to have easement, and we're going to build a drainage well and capture it back towards the roadway. So that was a little bit of an extra deal. That wasn't... I didn't know quite yet we were going to be able to do that, so we didn't put it into design cost initially. All right, any questions about that part of the presentation? Okay.
Todd, it does not change the overall cost of the capital ordinance. Is that correct?
I'm getting to that.
All right.
Town manager's impatient. So because I'm giving an update, I figured I'd put on a slide. So the way the ordinance is written right now is, you've got design at $67,000, roadway estimated $300. Again, that's just an estimate. And then construction is at $975,000. Now, that $975,000 was to build a road all the way to Navajo, which we're not doing. We are technically only building it to... You don't see the very end, because it's not on the screen, but we're basically stopping at the steps of cavity's property and putting a dead-end guardrail. So it's not going to cost $975,000. That was based on the full road. So technically, we don't need that, but I don't have our final estimate yet, so I can't change that right now. So we're going to move construction dollars back into design to take care of the $20,000, $20,000, $228,000 I'm requesting tonight. So basically, you're putting that back in design. I rounded it up to $90,000, took away from the construction, and project still is $1,342,000. But again, it ain't going to cost that much, construction-wise. So you have two motions. One motion is to approve the supplemental agreement with RS&amp;H for that $20,228,000, and then the second motion would be to approve the CIP ordinance revision. Any questions?
No questions? Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'm going to make them together. I make a motion to approve the supplemental agreement with RS&amp;H for the additional design services in the amount of $20,000. in the amount of twenty thousand, two hundred and twenty-eight dollars, and the capital project ordinance number thirty-eight for Navajo Trail Extension as presented.
All in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you, mayor, counsel.
Brings us to Turning Point donation. Is anybody here from Turning Point? If, if not, I guess we'll just open it up for discussion. They were here, I think, last meeting and asked for a donation. They asked for twenty-five hundred dollars, however, you can decide the amount you wish to donate. Any, yes, sir, Mr. McIntyre.
This question is for Mr. Waterwitz, Jim. Last year in the budget, we did not use all the agency donations that we had set aside, right? And if we did not, so can you just tell me briefly, sorry, can you just tell me?
We had budgeted forty, four thousand, five hundred, and we spent one thousand.
Last year.
So three thousand, five hundred was not spent, Marcus.
All right, thank you, sir. Thank you, mayor, that's, that's the only question I had, so.
Okay, Mr. Gay. What have we, Mr. Waterwitz, what have we donated in the past?
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
What have we donated in the past, what amount to Turning Point? Do you know right off?
Yes, Turning Point, I, I looked that up today, Dennis, as a matter of fact. We gave them a thousand dollars in two thousand, twenty-one.
Okay, okay.
That was the last donation we made to them.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Would somebody like to make a donation request?
I'd like to make one, sir.
Sure.
Seeing that we had thirty-five hundred returned and we have, our budget this year's four thousand, five hundred again? Yeah, I'd like to make a request, or I'd like to make a motion, sir, sorry, that we donate, we make a donation of twenty-five hundred to Turning Point, sir.
Okay, all in favor? Unanimous? Easy enough, good job. Okay, that brings us down to C, consideration of resolution of censure for Mayor Pro Tim Barber, council members McIntyre and Gay. Mr. McIntyre, do you wanna?
Yes, sir. I'd like to address the council and everybody in the audience. I don't come to you tonight relishing this opportunity. This is something that took a lot of deliberation and thought. But I, as an elected official, I'm here, one of six people elected up here, who, and we have to sometimes speak and make decisions that is in the public interest. There's no fun or joy. This is something that weighed heavily on me, but if I, if I were to sit here and tell you that I can come here and make this easy, I would be lying. In this great country of always, there are rules, there are regulations. Freedom of speech is something that is protected, but that doesn't necessarily mean we get to say what we want. With that being said, sir, I want to just bring back to the public's attention, last time we met, this information was not up on the screen. But I want to bring back this item up, just so that way the public has that. I think since the last time we met, there's been, the information has been made public for anyone who wanted to receive it. I think you had to go in and ask the manager via email or phone call or in person. I need it provided to you. This comes from a Facebook post that was made. And the thing is, as, as representatives, as we are charged with that duty of being able to have deliberations, have discussion, and come back to the public with information that is, that is accurate. We are agents of the town, whether we are elected or the people working within the building, we are agents of the town, and therefore, we are, we are, we are responsible to the public. They're the ones who put us in office. We give the manager the, the platform to go, and the staff to go ahead and execute some of these things. So there's been some discussion, and it came up tonight again, in that we have a downtown master plan that we're looking at. The town council as a whole voted for it unanimously to go ahead and put that plan in motion. The plan has been discussed at the planning board meeting. And in that particular meeting, that's where this item comes up. And, you know, to see somebody who is a, I guess you wanna say, a colleague, putting up a post that is not accurate at all, and then the comments that followed, including ones asking for the termination of employment of a particular employee because of an inaccurate post, so therefore, the public didn't have that correct information, all right? And I'll read it again, sir, just to make sure that I am accurate in what I, I talked about. I think somebody this evening talked about accuracy, transparency and truth. So here we go. Churches are not part of the environment we want. IT planner explaining proposed downtown master plan at the meeting. That was a statement put on Facebook by Mr. Barber. It is shown in document two, there in black and white. It's not something that I picked up or I translated, it was there. I took my time and I listened to the entire planning board meeting. I actually watched it and I listened, and I rewound, I rewound certain parts of it just to make sure that I got it correct. But I got to the, to the two seventeen, two eighteen minute mark of that, two hour seventeen minute, two hour eighteen minute mark of that meeting. And it says, you eliminate, this is Mrs., this is Brandy Dizel, town planner, speaking, and she's directing that statement to the planning board, saying that you eliminate those uses that consume, consume a lot of land, or a lot of land, or consume a lot of dead space. I know churches eliminating that use might be a hard choice, and this board can say no. She's talking about the planning board. We want to put churches back as a permitted use, and we will put the capital P in the chart for you. However, Sunday morning and Wednesday night, that creates a lot of dead space for the environment that you are trying to create and that we said we wanted. This is the exact statement. So when I read, when I read this, what she's, when I read and I listened to what she said and I saw what was posted on Facebook, it's totally inaccurate. It's not a slip of the tongue, it's not a, you know, I didn't hear it well. It was deliberate, and I know that there's, you know, it, it, there's an election season and this may be something to generate votes. But that being said, I don't mind if somebody disagrees with the plan and what, what comes in the plan, but you cannot put that out there. Because the thing is, the trauma that it creates, the hostile work environment that it creates, that something like that creates, where you're sitting at home and somebody is out there calling for your job with inaccurate information, that's not necessary. The staff on their own, the planning board staff, oh, sorry, the planning department staff, cannot go out and create a plan on their own. They have to be instructed, and they have to be instructed by this board. This very town council has to give them the instructions so they can go ahead and do this, right? The post was taken down. If the post was supposed to be so correct, and it was, there was nothing wrong with it, why was it removed? It was removed because there was pushback from quite a few citizens, basically challenging this individual in that, on that particular post, right? A subsequent post was put up, and again, the same tone, not clearly articulating what was said. I am here, I am a responsible individual, I'm here on the council. When it comes to deliberating matters that come before the council, I don't do it on Facebook. That's not the platform, that's not what the people elected me to do. I either meet with my colleagues and I discuss things with them, or I ask them, can I get their support? If they disagree, that's fine, but I come into this meeting room here, and that's where I will give my opinion on what I think is right or wrong. Take a vote and then I move on. But when we, when we look at the second post and we see it eliminating churches is a hard choice, right? Sunday morning, Wednesday night, create dead space. The thing is, it's not accurate, and I don't mind the public get that information. It's fine to give the public information. I think this council in particular has given the public a lot of information. Since I've been here, this year is the first year, I think, we voted to open up, open, close session a minute to the public. So this group, I think, this board, I think, is very big on making sure the public has all the relevant information. So therefore, any decision that we make, people are not in the dark. But when I have my colleagues doing that, it's not right, you know? And then we go to, we go to emails that is being sent. You know, I, I write the manager, okay, take my time, I'll write him. And I'm, I'm listening to, I'm, I'm reading an email that came to the manager, where it says, I've watched part of the meet, the planning board meeting. Here's what I heard a staff member say. Churches are not part of the environment we want. And it goes on to explain, and churches are Sunday and Wednesday dead spaces that the plan eliminates. Clearly, this person knows little about the churches as they have schools, daycare, after-school, meals on wheels, senior women, men, youth programs. What an ignorant statement. That right there is what really, you know, it, it kinda did it for me because I felt like, you don't say that, you have no idea what was being said. First of all, the quote was totally inaccurate. But then, we look at statements like that in an email to the town manager, talking about something that was posted. The thing is, this individual had that information totally wrong. A phone call could have cleared it up, but it wasn't. We had the opportunity last meeting for my colleague to look at what was said, have the information, and all I was really needed was, I'm mayor culprit, I'm sorry, I misheard, or I misread, or it's an error, it was the heat of the moment, sorry, it won't happen again. But not once, this was talked about. And I'm not talking about anybody not being able to speak. People should speak, they should have a chance to speak. But when you speak, have facts, be accurate, be correct. Because things like that can cause people stress, can create a hostile work environment, could possibly cost them their jobs. This is not necessary. The staff that we've sat here all the time and talked about, how hard they work, how valuable they are, the work that they do for us to make us sit up here and look like we actually know what we're doing. We've said that, and on the flip of a dime, we could just go ahead and turn that around and say these things? I can't, I can't sit here, sir, and say, and say nothing. I have to speak up, and that's what I'm doing right now. Back to you, sir.
Mr. Mayor. When we are elected, we go to a course in ethics, and we're taught that we should be ethical in everything we do and our position with this town. When we have somebody who puts things out there that aren't true and they resist changing unless somebody calls them out, and this individual's been called out several times for things that were not true, I don't know if he wants to instigate things. I'm not sure what goes through his mind when he does these things. But the truth is right here with this town council when this comes to us. This has been discussed and should have never been put out on social media by a town council person until we actually had it here before us. We can, you know, I think this individual, I feel sure he voted for this study from this, this company that did the study and made recommendations. Those are recommendations. So it's inappropriate for somebody to make comments about recommendations from an outside firm and throw gas on the fire, upset everybody in the town. And then when they put things up that aren't true, like he put up two pictures of a church, then he took down a picture of one of the churches, then he put up another picture of a different church, and every time he got called out, he took it down or he changed it. That is not ethical, and there's no reason in the world this should have been blown up to the point that it has been.
Any other comments?
I've said this a couple of times, just because someone says something doesn't make it true, right? These guys are malicious. I, I don't trust them. They're, these things were said, I read them, I saw them. I don't know where they're, where that, what they're seeing. And to make fun of a man that has hearing aids in a censure meeting a week or so ago, that's asinine. I, I don't trust these guys, I don't understand it, why they made this deal.
Mr. Gay.
Hearing aids have nothing to do with social media. They have nothing to do with social media. Typed words into a computer has nothing to do with hearing aids.
Okay. Anybody else? Crystal, you got anything to say?
I mean, I guess the only thing I'm really gonna say is I've read through everything, I've watched the meeting. Whenever you say things like full quotes, but then leave out parts of it, you know, it does lead people to believe something that wasn't said. And so, you know, I, I hope this was done out of mistake more than malicious, but I do feel like it does lead our citizens to believe something that isn't true. So, you know, unfortunately, we're sitting here today talking about this for that reason. I think truth and transparency is very important, I agree with Tom whenever he said that. I think our citizens have the right to know what's going on. I think we put it out there. Every day, all of our meetings are recorded, everything is out there, all the information is there. I think a lot of people are busy and don't have time, and so they do resort to talking to us or going to social media. So even more so than ever, I think it's very important for us to only say things that are factual. So, you know, I've, I've, again, reviewed this and read over it, and, you know, that's kinda where my mind is right now.
Mr. Barber, if you wanna?
Do I get to talk? First off, I'd like to apologize for the special meeting. I got a little emotional, and it's not my style, and there's a lot of mud slinking up here, and I spent years ignoring it, the, the comments and all of that. You know, they speak of opportunity. I got the documents after the special meeting. They wanted, they didn't want me to have a defense. I got the, agenda came out, and the resolution wasn't in it. It was emailed after, so I don't think they wanted me to prepare for this day either. But I did put together an answer. But for what small opportunity I do get to answer, I appreciate it. The, the, the opportunity to answer this politically motivated action. I noticed the resolution I received only addresses a couple of the ethics canons that were brought up at the special meeting. I assume I'm not going to get an apology for all the other alleged allegations that I was falsely accused of. There was more than this. The resolution centers on two allegations, one that I posted inappropriate, illegal or confidential postings. I posted nothing confidential, illegal, illegal or inappropriate nature. There's been nothing presented to substantiate that allegation. The other is that I posted false or misleading material due to a Facebook posting. I made that detail to staff member explaining that churches are not part of the environment we want in the new downtown master plan. My post was a factual representation of the proposed downtown master plan core district. I appropriately sent emails to the town manager expressing concerns about this statement and other matters expressed by citizens at the August planning board meeting. The town manager confirmed in his email reply of August 22nd, referencing churches are still permitted in six of the town's ten zoning districts, and explaining how storefront churches don't fulfill the use of a downtown, which would be a hub of daily commercial or other activity. The town manager even responded to my reference of a town staff's member's remark referring to churches as dead space. I stated in the email, I thought this was an ignorant statement. I never called anyone ignorant. The town manager never stated or hinted that what I called his attention to about the staff member's comments saying was false. I emailed the town attorney in reference to the Federal Religious Land Use and Institutional Persons Act that protects churches from discrimination and zoning. I did this because the city Monroe was sued in recent years over churches not being a permitted use in zoning districts. The town attorney confirmed the planning department is aware of the law. The town attorney in email stated, I am confident that the town could successfully defend a lawsuit based on RLUIPA, which is the Religious Land Use and Institutional Persons Act, if the downtown plan is adopted as is, which doesn't have churches as a religious assembly as a permitted use. So even, she even said the other option, which is you're well aware, is to add churches back in as a permitted use. The staff clearly put together a downtown master plan that does not permit religious assembly in the core, and the staff member was letting the planning board know in August that churches are not what's wanted. People in attendance heard the same as I, some very prominent citizens of Indian Trail. I admit now and admitted earlier, I did not get the quote perfect. I may have missed some ellipses of a fragmented quote. I don't hear well, and I'm sure many people with hearing loss didn't appreciate council, council members' comment about hearing aids comments last meeting. I'm not sure how I missed the quote a little bit, it certainly was not intentional. The town manager recently put out some incorrect information on campaign sign placements. In response, the town attorney said, governments are run by humans, and errors and mistakes unfortunately happen. I did not intentionally or maliciously mess up the quote, but the factual nature of what was said is clearly accurate. I edited and retracted the posted quote and posted the full YouTube transcript. The public reaction is consistent, and the same is with the previous post. A kangaroo court ignores standards of law of justice. How can the town manager in email on August 28th state the social media and communications document is part of the orientation manual that was created the guideline for using social media? And he said it is not a formal policy that was adopted or passed by council. I mean, it was voted on, I'm sorry. I mean, it was voted on, I'm sorry. Yet the proposed resolution states it as a policy. It is not even listed as a policy in the manual that's referred to. It even seems I'm being judged like I was writing the legal brief. The post was on a media outlet, not for a court of law. And I don't think the court would find intentionally, that I intentionally misquoted or changed the meaning of what was said. I think the message that our downtown plan in the core district does not permit religious assembly is crystal clear. And that's the message the public received from me and at the planning board meeting. The disingenuous, the disingenuous nature of this intent to censure has been clearly pointed out. I do know the vast majority of people I've heard from do not agree with the proposed downtown plan that lists religious assembly as a non-permitted use in the core district, and is restricted of growth to existing grandfather churches. I did not mislead the public. I informed the public of a proposed plan that I feel is not consistent with the values of the majority of our citizens. I appreciate the tremendous support I have received due to this political attack. Thank you, and God bless you.
Any other comments? You got about a minute, and then, then let's move on.
First of all, apparently, Mr. Barber did know about it all because he came with multiple pages to defense himself, defend himself. Obviously, he got it somehow. Second of all, with all this misinformation that was out there, in a two-week period of time, the legal fees for Mr. Barber calling about all this gossip that has been spread over the internet was over $5,000 to the town attorney. It's ridiculous, the amount of everything that happens, he goes to the town attorney, it's been over, I'm sure, over $10,000 of your money that's been spent on the town attorney, over just nonsensical stuff, even when they made a mistake over the signs. The town attorney had to write a half a page to him over the signs. It's ridiculous to spread this stuff, upset everybody in the town, go to the attorney...
Any other comments? Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Anberger.
He was able to compile his answers by getting the resolution Friday afternoon, after the agenda was made. So of course, he had time to make it up. But before the September 8th meeting, he had no knowledge of what they were attacking him for. It's unfair. I'd like to know how much we paid Karen to set up, sign, make up this resolution.
I just have a suggestion. Maybe after all this is over, we should go through and relook at our policies and maybe rework a little bit so that we have it a little bit more black and white.
Maybe a good, a good suggestion. Is everybody finished with their comments? I, I have just a, a comment or two. I, I hate that we're in this situation. I hate that we're up here, it's, I don't like it. We had a downtown master plan that the council voted on unanimously, spent $90,000 on a, a plan to have a company come in and listen to the public and come up with a plan that they could bring to the council and that the council could work with them on the plan. To my knowledge, I don't think any, any of the council members have, have spoken with the planning department on the plan to make the plan better. In all honesty, the, the plan, and I think in 2006, has more density than the plan has in this plan. And instead of working with the planning department, you know, I hear, or we hear that the VFW is gonna be gone, there's no more VFW, well, that, that wasn't true, just, just wasn't in the picture. Heard the drugstore was gonna be gone. Instead of coming back and working with the planning department over and asking questions, nobody asked questions, they ran out to the public and told them there would be 10-story buildings downtown. There's no 10-story buildings going downtown because we worked that out, we worked it out to the fact there's only gonna be a 50 feet. That, that was the intent of the plan. The plan was to be worked on and worked with, not to take the original $90,000 that we spent on having a company come in and want us to talk about it. It went straight to the public, and it went straight to social media. And I'm not gonna say whether it's right or wrong, what happened, but, and the, the most important thing to me is that whether or not it was a misquote, whether or not it wasn't a misquote, but it wasn't what was said, it to me, on, on social media. The planning director did not make those comments. And when it was put down that she did make those comments, these were some of the comments that were directed at her. "The planner should be fired." Had numerous people check that out, checks, like that. I agree 100%, or, excuse me, just, I agree. And the one that really gets me is, I can't believe anyone would make that statement. Anyone that agrees with that should be removed from the committee. Well, she didn't make that comment. She didn't make the comment that was put on social media. So for her to be removed for, for something she didn't even say, I would have liked to have seen that corrected. Again, it's a plan that, that we all should be here, and I have even suggested tonight, to work with, let's sit down and work with it, and, and talk, and, and get, get it right, whether it's, whether it's something we wanna do or we don't wanna do, and move on. And I'm all for putting this plan off, I'm all for putting it off, but I don't wanna be here tonight. I don't wanna be here tonight. But I think people have to defend our employees. If our, if the employee said on social media what was said, I can understand it. But since it was a misquote, and people demanded her job, I would have loved to have seen an apology, or something that said, hey, she didn't say that, so, I'm sorry. That didn't happen. I have respect for every person up here, and we're gonna have to move on, and you guys have to make a vote on that tonight, but...
I got a rebuttal to you.
Okay.
You know, we did spend $90,000 on this master plan. You know, when someone present you, presents you with their concept, you know, we spent $90,000, we thought we had a product, you know? I don't know what you guys heard, I know what I heard, I watched it, John Hemby knows what he heard, things were said. This guy didn't just dream these statements up, you know? I, I just don't understand what the, you know, the witch hunt's about. I just don't get it. That's all I gotta say, God bless everyone.
All right, well, and, go ahead, Todd.
Everybody's gotta talk a lot. The first plan was put out for public. So when you say, well, you went on social media and all that, well, the thing is, is the town published it. It was public. The planning board meeting was a public hearing. So if you're talking about something on anywhere, whether you're emailing the town manager, whether you put it on social media or whatever, these are public things. And a lot of people agree, well, basically, yeah, she did say what I posted. So, you know, and a lot of people that were at the meeting. Okay, so I messed it up a little bit. I apologize for messing up a little bit.
That's it.
You know, but, you know, so, I mean, heck, it is what it is. I gave my response. The fact is, you can read the plan, you can look at the transcript. Yeah, churches are not listed, it's not the environment they want, it's not what they wanna put together in the downtown, it's not part of the hub, as he said. Okay, so there it is. That's the truth. All right, so I've said all I can say, so that's, that's where it's at. I appreciate everybody listening and your consideration, and I appreciate everybody that's supporting me on this.
I'd like for John Hemby to wait for my social, for my comments toward the end, or something I'd really like to hear.
Dennis, Dennis, that's enough. We, we've been through it, we've caught, you know, in, in all its reality, it's not about the plan tonight, it's about what was said in social media.
What was construed, yeah.
That's kind of, Todd, I don't wanna be here, I really don't, I really don't wanna be here. But with that being said, all, all said, can I, does anybody wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion, sir. I brought this up, I'm, I'm willing to make a motion. I'm, I'm, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the resolution of censure as presented, sir.
A second motion.
All in favor? Got Mr. McIntyre, Mr. Gay, Ms. Biholic in favor, all against? Mr. Anberger and Mr. Barber against, it passes 3-2.
Mr. Mayor, would you like me to read the resolution of censure into the record, sir?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you, sir, appreciate the time. State of North Carolina Indian Trail Resolution Number 039-12-23. Whereas the state of North Carolina, as set forth in NCGS 160A-86, has mandated that the Indian Trail Town Council adopts a code of ethics to guide the actions of council members in performance of their duties, and whereas the town of Indian, the Town Council of Indian Trail has adopted a code of ethics that addresses, among other things, a council member's obligation to, one, demonstrate the highest standards of personal integrity, truthfulness, honesty, and fortitude in all their public activities in order to inspire public confidence and trust in local government. The mayor and the, and town council members should participate in establishing, maintaining, and enforcing, and should themselves observe high standards of conduct as the integrity and independence of the office may be preserved. Canon 2 of the Code of Ethics. Item number 2, be honest, patient, dignified, and courteous to those with whom they deal in their official capacity, and should require similar conduct of their staff and others subject to their, their direction and control. Canon 4, Paragraph B, 3 of the Code of Ethics. Whereas, in addition to the Code of Ethics, the town board members are subject to the town's social media and communications policy that includes, among other things, the following guidelines. One, members shall not post any false or misleading material. Two, members are personally responsible for content they post to social media and may be held liable for inappropriate or illegal or confidential postings. Whereas, on or around August 17th, 2023, Mayor Pro Tempore Todd Barber posted to his elect Todd Barber Facebook page the following quote, "Churches are not part of the environment we want," end quote, and attributed that quote to an, open quotes, IT planner explaining proposed downtown master plan at core meeting, end quote. This inaccurate post triggered a significant outcry, public outcry, that, among other things, included calls to terminate the employment of the Indian Trail Planner, who was falsely quoted and created significant public distrust of town staff. And whereas, after reviewing a recording of the meeting in question, council has confirmed that no Indian Trail Planner made the statement that appeared in Mayor Pro Tempore Barber's Facebook page. And whereas, after being informed of the inaccuracy of the statement posted, council member Barber removed the false post and replaced it on August 18th, 2023, with a second quote amended to remove contextually significant information such as the incomplete quote was misleading and retained the negative impressions of the Indian Trail, the Indian Trail Planner and Planning Department, and further compounded public outcry and distrust of town staff. Whereas, in light of the false and misleading nature of the Facebook postings made by Mayor Pro Tempore Barber and the immediate and negative impact the posting had on the public's perception of the Indian Trail Planner, the Planning Department, and town staff in general, the Towns Council called a special meeting on Tuesday, August 29th, 2023, to address Mayor Pro Tempore Barber's social media posts and possible violations of the Code of Ethics, Canon 2, elected officials, officials' policy guidelines, Sections 1 and 4, and the town's social media guidelines. Whereas, Mayor Pro Tempore Barber took the opportunity to submit a verbal and written response during the special meeting of August 29th, 2023, was provided all written materials supporting said allegations on August 30th, 2023, and was further given the opportunity to offer a response at the regular meeting of Town Council on September 12th, 2023. Now therefore, after due consideration, the Town Council of Indian Trail hereby resolves: One, the Facebook post created by Mayor Pro Tempore Barber on or around August 17th, 2023, was false and misleading, had a significant negative impact on public confidence of an individual Indian Trail employee, the Indian Trail Planning Department, and Indian Trail staff in general. Two, the Facebook post on or around August 17th, 2023, was a violation of Canon 2 and Canon 4, Paragraph B, Section 3 of the Town Code of Ethics and the Town Social Media Guidelines. Three, the Facebook post created by Mayor Pro Tempore Barber on August 18th, 2023, was intentionally misleading, had a significant negative impact on public confidence of an individual Indian Trail employee, the Indian Trail Planning Department, and Indian Trail staff in general. The Facebook post created by Mr. Bar, sorry, four, the Facebook post created by Mayor Pro Tempore Barber on August 18th, 2023, was a violation of Canon 2 and Canon 4, Paragraph B, Section 3 of the Town Code of Ethics and the Town Social Media Guidelines. Number five, Mayor Pro Tempore Barber had the opportunity to retract and correct the false Facebook post on August 17th, 2023, but instead, with his post of August 18th, 2023, proceeded to exacerbate a misleading narrative that caused a breach in public trust of town government. Six, council recognizes Mayor Pro Tempore Barber's right to advocate on his, on behalf of his constituents and his conscious, and, and his conscience, and to use social media platforms in those efforts. However, as an elected official of the town of Indian Trail, it is Mayor Pro Tempore Barber's duty to ensure that his written word demonstrate the highest standards of truthfulness and honesty. As recognized in the North Carolina State Constitution, Section 14, freedom of speech and the press are two of the great bulwarks of liberty, and therefore shall never be restrained, but every person shall be held responsible for their abuse. The Town Council of Indian Trail hereby censures Mayor Pro Tempore Barber for the conduct described herein and admonishes that he govern his future conduct so as to refrain from publicizing false and misleading statements related to the employees and affairs of the town of Indian Trail. This day, September 12th, 2023.
Brings us to new business. Arpa stormwater drainage improvements?
No, that item was struck from the record.
Sorry, what now?
11.
Okay, thank you. I didn't take it off, obviously. Todd, thank you. Discussion items, I'm sorry, flood, flood maps, community meeting, Mr. Hunsinger.
Yeah, Mayor, Council, wanted to just bring this up because we didn't have a second meeting in, in August, so there is a public meeting tomorrow night at the Union County Government Center. That's at 500 North Main Street, Monroe, North Carolina. It's from 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM. What's occurring is FEMA has updated some, some of their maps. Our town has several, what they call firm maps, I don't have the exact number, but about, I'd say a little over half of them have been, are gonna be updated, and these are considered preliminary maps. And so FEMA got with the county, wanted to schedule a public meeting to just say, you know, this is happening, if you got any questions. So addresses were sent out, the county came up with a database for the town, we got those addresses, we sent them out, I think it's a little over 500 people that are affected. And so, any of those people that hear this, that maybe not got the letter, just wanted to encourage them to come out there tonight, tomorrow night. I'll be out there with Union County reps, city and town, other, I'm sure, stormwater administrators, and North Carolina Department of Public Safety will be out there as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Todd. Brings us to the managers' update.
Okay, see the memo that was sent out to you, First Avenue? Tom, you asked about a streetlight, we got it. That intersection actually is in two different jurisdictions, and we were able to position it. Mr. Hunsinger and Mr. McLamb, I think, coordinated all that. We're going out to bid to do Chestnut Parkway Phase 3. Just to remind you, we pick up from Gribble Road to Old Monroe Road, and when we do that, we will put a temporary intersection in, so when the state finishes there, and we're, we're moving faster than the state, you'll be able to do a ride out, ride in at Monroe Road. We thank the council for paying for that temporary intersection, and when they widen Old Monroe Road, whenever, it'll have a more permanent intersection. You heard the report on Navajo tonight, and thank you for... You heard the report on Navajo tonight, and thank you for allowing us to make that adjustment. Our right-of-way person on Indian Trail Road's beginning to make progress. I think, I don't know if he's closed how many deals right now, but he did report that he's making good progress. Emerald Woods, this is a project that you're interested in. We gave the folks for the month of September to let us know whether they're interested. I think there are 38 customers out there, and I think we've heard from nine. Adam, if that's incorrect, please correct me, and that we will be sending out a second reminder before the end of the month. Also, Morse Park, the rough draft cost of that is about $1 million, because it is about 1.1, 1.2 miles. The county managers indicated they would certainly consider a 50-50 offer if we so choose. Any questions? Okay, moving on. Upcoming items currently scheduled for the 26th, besides the public hearing we've already talked about. And these items are all subject to change. We've got a new business coming in. So what is this, like three businesses and two meetings? We've got Pet Bar coming in. We're also going to receive, because I know this was in the interest of some of you, a presentation from the Union County Emergency Management. They want us to endorse their plan, and so instead of putting in on the consent, we invited them to come see us and tell you what's in the plan. We also, I was reminded that we have an RFQ, we'll be issuing an RFQ for a local plan for Indian Trail, the Town of Indian Trail. Also, I think we're going to send you a resolution to take over Indian Trail Unionville Road. Right now, after you cross that intersection, it belongs to the state, and it makes more sense for us to have that to go to 74. We did a compensation study a few months ago. There's very little change on that, but we need to share that with you and hopefully get your approval on that. We will give you an update on mowing. We'll talk about streetlights. We'll talk about future space needs. And in closing, I do want to remind you, if you need a hard copy of the plan, the table of uses, the UDO, anything like that, let me know, come see me or something. If you have some thoughts in the plan that you want the planning staff to be aware of, again, let us know hopefully by, you know, in the next few days. But probably most important is since the agreement tonight was to do a presentation at the next meeting, they need to do some work on that. So what are the topics that are, you want to make sure we include in the presentation? That is all that I have.
Okay, thank you. It brings us to council member comments.
Oh, hang on a minute. Intersection list.
We got it.
Okay, thank you, Tom. Thank you, Dennis and Crystal. All right. You see the list. Does anybody have any opposition of the 15 intersections? They're not in your intersection with the exception of one. I just need a nodding of the head that you see the list. I see the nodding of the head so we can truthfully tell the county that you have seen the list. Thank you.
Now, that brings us to council comments. Councilmember McIntyre?
Thank you. I want to say a couple of things. As I prepare for exiting this wonderful council, I figure I'd share a couple of things with you guys. You hear my accent and you're wondering where I'm from. Those of you who don't know, I'm going to maintain that I'm from the mountains of North Carolina, and that's how we speak up there. But that being said, I'm an immigrant. I came to this country to go to school, love this country, got an opportunity to stay here. I chose to become a citizen, put my right hand up, and I took the oath, and I agreed to defend and abide by the U.S. Constitution. I can sing the National Anthem, and I taught myself the National Anthem. Where I'm from, totally different anthem, totally different rhythm, different words. But I did learn the National Anthem by myself so that when my kids were older, I could sing it with them, I could teach them, although they learned it in grade school. But that also, when I go to a ballgame or something, I can sing it and know what I'm saying, right? Pledge of Allegiance, every meeting we say. I actually know the words. Mayor, I'll ask that you do not call on me next meeting to say the pledge of allegiance, but I did. I taught myself. And when my first son was born, I bought a copy of a book about the founders and the framers of the Constitution and the Constitution so that I could read it. And the reason I wanted to read it so that, and that time I was not a citizen, I had a green card at that time, but I wanted to read it and know so that when my kids got older, I could answer questions that they had. So I say this to tell you that being a citizen of this great country is not something that I take lightly. I didn't come to this decision where I was born into it. I actually stood up and I wanted to be one. I am still very proud to be a citizen. So when I sit up here and I say or I do things, I do it with the full intent of, one, maintaining my allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the North Carolina Constitution. If I say something to you, it has to be true, otherwise I cannot say it. And if I tell you lies, how will you ever know that whatever I say is not true? So when I sit here tonight, this is not me trying to go after anybody. I haven't endorsed any candidates. I haven't had anybody over my house to try and ask me to vote. I wish everybody well in the election. I'm happy that people are running to want to serve and sit up here and hopefully do a good job. But I leave you with this. Anytime you're here, you sit up here, the easiest decision and the easiest vote you can do is to say no. Takes a lot of courage to say yes, to vote on something, to move the town forward. But I thank all of you who've come here and who sit up here and serve the town in any capacity. Staff, as always, you guys do a lot of work, and I do appreciate all the things that you do, right? I really do. I know you've been through a lot, but the fact that you guys are here, steady, keeping the town going, I'm very appreciative of that. And to the council, all I'll ask of you is just do your best. Thank you.
Councilmember Buholic.
Once again, I just want to thank everyone for coming out and speaking. We had a lot of public comments, which was great. Other than that, I mean, Mark has kind of summed up everything in his speech, so everyone have a good night.
Councilmember Ambergy?
Yeah, I'd like to thank everyone for the prayers from my grandfather, my father-in-law, excuse me. I'd say vote for Todd Barber, Dan Schellenkamp, Larry Dukes, Heather Klaus. I support those folks. And last thing I can say is editing. There's a lot of editing that goes on in the world. God bless y'all.
Councilmember Gay?
Thank you. I've known John Hemby a long time. John, I think, will tell you that I'm a straight shooter, and I've always felt that John was truthful and straight up. Ran into John at Panera Bread, and I was there with Wayne Courtney and John Early. So a couple of days later, I hear that Mr. Barber has, I guess, talked to John, and that I was there with an attorney and Michael Falconberry. And of course, that was spread through the town, and I'm shocked. I mean, you know, I've got witnesses. It wasn't Michael Falconberry who's here. He can tell you it wasn't him. It was an attorney. There was no reason for me to be at Panera Bread with an attorney, but for some reason, Mr. Barber wanted to spread that around. I have a problem with someone who takes something and turns it around and makes it into something else. Somebody told me that somebody says I come in here drunk before the meetings. You know, there's no excuse for that kind of behavior. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tempore Barber?
I've been here three and a half years. I've never used my closing comments for that type of dribble and derogatory comments. And I'm not here to campaign, but it's not hard to see how the vote went because we're 60 days away from an election. The VFW Auxiliary Yard Sale is September 16 from 8 to noon. They're accepting items on the 15th from 2 to 5:00 PM. They say no close. So if you want to be a part of the VFW Yard Sale, there it is. I'd like to give my thoughts and prayers out to, and I appreciate Mayor Com talking about Alan Tarzinski that passed away. I had a 17-year-old. He was kind of done with high school. He mentioned something about maybe he was going to join the guard like his friend. I had Arnold Tarzinski in my house the next day, and we signed him up. So, yeah, so Alan was a great guy. Yeah, he really was, and he'll be missed. And thoughts and prayers to his family. Seen him for years. I had something from the Common Heart. They say food is a basic necessity of life. Estimating that over 26,000 adults and children live in homes that are food insecure in this area. So if you want to consider donating to Common Heart's pantry, or maybe donating to Food for Families, maybe you can help some of these people out. I appreciate everybody's support. I don't apologize for defending religious assembly. I think it's an important issue. And, you know, so it's just, I've been a pretty consistent church member and goer my whole life, and I can thank my parents for making sure I was there every Sunday. So, and I've got great parents, and I know a lot of us are church members, and there's things that are important. But I appreciate everybody, and God bless you. Thank you.
Mayor Com?
Yes. Again, I'm glad this meeting's over, I can tell you that. And we don't have to. It's the second time I've had to go through this in 12 years. And it's never a good thing. And, you know, we can get up here and support people, and that's fine. I just want to remind people, it wasn't about religious assemblies, not what this meeting was about, it's not what we were talking about. Tonight, we were talking about comments made on social media, whether they were right or wrong, and, you know, you're getting, Crystal, you're getting criticized for your vote, and people get criticized, all of you got criticized for your vote, and I don't even know how I would have voted. But I will say this. You stood up for an employee. You've got 48, 40, 50 employees in this building, and every one of them saw what happened tonight. Every employee in this building knows what happened. Every employee in this building knows what was said, and knows who said it, and knows who didn't say it. So if you don't defend the employee on something she didn't say, and people want to take her job, she should be fired. I can't believe anyone would make that statement. Anyone that agrees with that should be removed from the office. I think you did the right thing as far as defending employees. That's our job. That's our job. I'm just so, I'm just very, very sorry. It had to be this way. I wish it wouldn't have had to be that way. I like everybody up here. And I wish we didn't do that. Other than that, we need to be thankful for what we have, what we've got, and move on from tonight. So with that being said, can I get a motion to close?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor? Unanimous.